I would just say that's all corrected and as most of you on the planning commission are probably aware that that access drive was recently completed next to the Culver restaurant.
Okay, I'm sorry. So getting right into the design of it, you know, we like I said, we use the precedent of the existing sign. We did make some changes to the sign, taking into consideration that rate state route eight has higher vehicular speeds, you know, it's going to be putting a little bit more salt in the air. So the top of the sign I'm proposing is a is more of an aluminum painted with like a Matthews paint system, which is kind of like a car paint type of system. So so getting down to the scale of it right off the bat, the existing sign is about 18 by 18. This is about a total of about 14, 15. Sorry, I can actually take you live dimensions here. 13, four by about 18 feet to the top of the of the actual pitch of of the of the cornice. The base of the sign follows the existing sign, except for there's an archway in the existing sign that I don't necessarily see a purpose to. It might have actually served a little bit more of a purpose on on the on the existing, allowing you to see cars that might be exiting. On this one, we only have a one way exit. There's no turn left. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, Ed. Yeah, there's no need for for such a visual.
So in following the design of it, we we still pose putting the arch, but then allowing it to become an accent piece that has backlit extruded letter aluminum lettering signage. We still are following the detailing of the actual masonry and actually accentuating the piers a little bit more, capping them with cast stone to match, and then the cast stone accents in the center would match the detail. But then, as a good suggestion, I'm adding a little bit of light to the intersection or entrance. The cast stone would be a detail on the actual piers. It's not, I'm sorry, it'll be an actual light on the piers in the detail of the existing cast stones. So the we would then have backlit acrylic white with all the logos, and you can see there's a couple spaces for future tenants. If you were to actually add tenants, you there would be a time that you could actually discuss either realigning these. Right now we have 8 inch letters, you know, you could possibly do six to seven inch letters and allow more, or you would talk to Lowe's and Target and say, look, we're splitting all of them and no one gets a single. But as far as it goes right now, we do have room for two future tenants, and it seems like it should actually be enough to host all the businesses that would be there. Is there any questions? I guess I'm not sure where to go from this. The cornice that was submitted, I do have to point out the cornice that was submitted on the drawing was not reflective of the existing conditions. We are now showing, you know, for the construction documents, we are getting into the details to show the cornice that matches. So there's the R drawing, and here's the existing condition. This would all be all out of metal, and this is like a point oh eight oh metal. I'm not sure. I can't see myself, so I don't know if everyone's seen this or not. Yes or no?
Yep.
Yeah.
So these are just the metal products, but I was thinking that they would be more of a buff color with the cornice detail being an accent more to match the cast stone.
Where do you envision this sitting at the driveway?
I'm going to pull up the civil engineering drawing right now. So this is going to go in this little island. I'm sorry, it's jumping on me.
That's a good view right there, Ed.
Right here, sorry, before the island.
Yeah, there you go.
That is, okay.
Yeah, so Chairman, as you know, the the new road is in place now, so we've located the sign there so that it doesn't cause a line of sight issue for any motorists. It stays within the public right of way, so it's not on anyone's private property, and it's still visible to motorists on state route eight.
Can a private sign like that sit within the public right of way?
I Chairman, I think there's precedent for it. The existing sign that's at the 82 entrances is in the Center Island, so it's certainly right in the middle of the right of way.
Okay, because is that the main entrance that I forget? Is that it? That's a public road?
That is it. Yes, Golden Link Boulevard is a dedicated road, yes.
Now, does it? Does it have to sit back from the route eight right away a certain distance? And if it's not, does it need to have a variance or something like that?
Well, we've placed it here, Chairman. This way it's outside of ODOT's limited access for state route eight. If you'll see, it sits perhaps three or four feet west or outside of ODOT's right of way. ODOT certainly wouldn't be, I don't think they would be receptive to a structure like that within their their limited access right of way.
And that's pretty far back from where the cars actually stopped to look.
That's correct, yes. The cars pull up all the way to the the pork chop, if you will, or the splitter island. So the cars, as they pull up to the stop sign, they are beyond the location of the monument sign, so there's no line of sight issue.
So this is a 50 foot radius, so that would probably, you know, get a good two cars before probably the third car you would still be able to see, probably.
Yeah, you certainly would get two cars, yeah.
Okay, well, um I guess unless you've got something else, we've got, we do have comments from the staff.
Sure.
Mr. France here, if you want to go over your comments.
I'm sure I can. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll start out with that last comment. Signs are our private signs are not permitted in the public right of way. Section 117905 B9 of the recently adopted sign code prohibits private signs in a public right of way. So I'm not sure how that one ever got there in the first place, but we've used the term precedent. There's no sort of precedent setting to put that sign in the right of way. You'd have to to get a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals. It's explicitly prohibited under the code. So just start out there real quick. And I wasn't sure where the sign was sitting because the site plan really didn't indicate it. So that that was helpful to see that walk through by the by the applicant's architect. So my report dated December 6, 2020, I'll walk through that quickly for the commission. This is for the additional entrance sign as we've been hearing about. The existing development sign out of 82, I scaled that on Google Earth at like 28 feet tall. I think I heard the applicant say it was maybe 18 feet tall. But it's definitely not in compliance with the current code or the previous sign code. And it's like 245 square feet in sign area, at least, according to the Google Earth scale I put on it. So it definitely exceeds what the code allowed at that time. Looks like it might have been approved in early 2000. I know I kind of teased about my tenure with the city. That indeed was before me. I started in like 2006, so that that was up prior to that. So I don't know how it actually got approved. I don't have any records of a variance, but maybe there was one. So free staying signs under section G of the crossings, the Golden Lake Development Criteria states that they can be 10 feet in height with a maximum of 45 square feet on any one face. But then section G goes on to state that building wall signs and logos logos are subject to local regulatory ordinances. Then it says, section A states that this criterion is not intended to conflict or overrule local landscape requirements or regulatory ordinances. So in such case, the what that means is that the the planning zoning code for the city of Macedonia would prevail. In in that matter, then section 1179 of the Macedonia Planning and Zoning Code regulates signs and limits ground signs to eight feet in height. 1179 does go on to state that any adopted sign package for non-resident developments remain valid and if and previously and that had been previously adopted pursuant to the Macedonia sign code. Future amendments to existing sign packages shall comply with the provisions of the side code. So given that, the maximum height of the sign in the crossings development shall not exceed 10 feet in height and 45 square feet area. Basically, one conflicts and then the code then says, well, if you've adopted a sign package, that's okay. So in this case, the 10 feet would be the maximum that's recognized by the sign criteria. So the proposal is for about 16 feet tall, definitely out of compliance with the code. And I just again remind the commission, this is a code we just recently adopted within this past year. And I wasn't sure about the total sign area that was being proposed. There were missing some key measurements to determine that figure. So it sounds like it's going to exceed that 45 square feet. So when it's all said and done, a variance would definitely need to be obtained from the Board of Zoning Appeals. I don't quite understand why it needs to be so tall. It's a right in entrance in a highly recognized retail development with an extremely large sign at the 82 entrance. I feel like the sign could be scaled down to more of a human scale and still serve its purpose. As we look at that image right there, Great Escape, Chipotle, Panera, Culvers, Chick-fil-A, those are all running on Route Eight and have their own signage very easily identifiable. There's Chick-fil-A has their own monument sign. So there's a lot of signage that I feel like this can be dropped down to a human scale. Now, with that said, ultimately, the Board of Zoning Appeals has to weigh in and provide whether or not a practical difficulty exists unique to this property. So they would need a variance for the sign height, the sign area, as well as then their 117905 B9, the location of the sign being prohibited in the right of way. So my recommendation was that this that this item be tabled until the applicant moves forward and seeks those variances. I do think that it's within the commission's purview to recommend if you if you agree that the signs should be more of a human scale, that you could recommend that in this case to the to the Board of Zoning Appeal as a consideration, given that you did just recently adopt your sign code, and we do limit ground monument signs to a maximum height of eight feet. If I can answer any questions you may have.
I guess I just would like to make a statement. I don't necessarily agree that the human scale would make sense here. We don't really, it's not really a sidewalk entrance. It's a high speed state route entrance, and when you think about like people being able to see over people's cars, that's where I would agree. Now, to be honest with you, I was directed to this, you know, much more of a use the precedent of the other sign. So it was it was approached more like that precedent, so I'm just trying to take in everything that's being said about that entrance, and I guess that's my first reaction to the to the human scale comment.
Yeah, so I would agree that it's not a walking type of a of an environment, but this is like Godzilla looking over the city of Tokyo. It's it's very large. And and I do feel there's a lot of signage in the crossings that this could be scaled down. Maybe it's maybe it's, you know, a smaller variant. But at the end of the day, when you go, and I'm not sure if you've if you've been in front of a Board of Zoning Appeals, but it's on you as an applicant to prove you have a practical difficulty unique to the the property in question. And I will say that this notion of a precedent will be one that the Board of Zoning Appeal can't and shouldn't take up as as a legitimate argument because variances all across the nation have been upheld by the courts as not being precedent setting. So existing conditions are not precedent setting. They're unique to the property in question. So just something for you to consider as you go forward ultimately with your variance request.
Brian or Kevin, I was just, Mr. Parker brought this up. I was thinking the same thing. Is there kind of a standard for a rate of speed of a car is moving by a sign and the the recommended size or not to be smaller than like? I know like with digital signs, we don't want things moving because it becomes a safety concern. Is there something like that for a static sign like this?
So I think, and Mr. Westbrook's probably is going to know a lot, a lot more than I do, but I think ODOT does have standards for letter height, and a lot of our dynamic display language that's in our in our sign code is based on ODOT and F8 and and federal highway regulations. So I do feel like maybe they have something with letter height, but Mr. Westbrook, you might have a better idea.
There definitely is. I don't think the letter height of these, I'm seeing like eight inch letters. Is that is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
So I think those kind of things, it's probably going to be in that ballpark. I don't think the the letters and everything are necessarily oversized. They're probably appropriate size. I think it's probably more of the overall structure, and there's not really guidance for that type of thing.
Yeah, I got that. I was just saying like if the structure gets reduced, does it then reduce the letters on the sign? And then there's a problem with that. That's all I was going for.
Yeah, they might you probably to be visible and not cause a problem that the letters themselves probably would not should not get much smaller than that.
So I did a quick math on it. It was a this sign right now, basically the broad face of it is 225 square feet. So if you just think of that as being a, you know, a little less than a quarter of this sign to try to get all those names on and have like a nice structure to it. So it seems even if we if it makes sense to drop it, we would still be seeking a variance for a little bit larger than 45 square feet. I mean, 45 square feet sounds like more like a per tenant type of thing, you know what I mean? Not that I would say that this needs to apply, but I that sounds like a really small sign for this type of situation, basically.
Kevin, could I ask a question?
Please do. Go ahead.
Yeah, Kevin, and maybe Brian too. Instead of tabling this, which I guess Brian's recommending, why not send this to the 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 variance for the variance? And if they approve it, arguing the case and then showing what our thoughts on it, why would we table it? Why not just allow it to be administratively approved as long as they get the variance? Why would we slow this thing down to bring it back to study it some more when we have all our views out there already? Let them decide.
You you certainly you certainly could do that, Mr. Cox, for sure.
So I guess I guess one thing to just let the board know too, that in working with the the city's legal staff, we tried to actually, once we recognized and received your letter, Brian, we did respond and trying to say, hey, why don't we try to get to the Board of Zoning Appeals first, and they don't have a meeting this month? And that's the reason why we figured that if we could take this approach.
Yeah.
Commission members, any other questions?
Maybe I missed anything here. How's how's it being light lit? Is it is it backlighting or how?
Yeah, so the the sign itself is acrylic panel, just like the existing. So, you know, the the box itself would just be all acrylic and then backlit on both sides. And then the the Golden Link Boulevard is actually like a extruded lettering that has backlighting with LED backlights on the lettering itself.
Chairman, if I could go back just for a moment to the height of the sign question, one thing that I would want to let everyone on the meeting know is this sign, you know, is going to be located a pretty good distance back from state route eight to be outside of ODOT's right of way. So this sign would be further from state route eight than most signs on most roads in the city would be set back from that particular road. So of those, I think that's a little bit of the need as well to have a little bit larger sign. Motorists on state route eight would be viewing it from a little further distance.
Any other staff? Mr. Rodick?
Can I can I ask a question? What what's the date of the next planning commission meeting? Is it the 20th? Is it the same day as the BZA meeting? Because I'm just wondering.
January 11th with a deadline for submittals at December 18th. Is that right, Susan?
Or is it the? Oh.
Well, I mean, if this was tabled, we would just be on it already, correct? But I guess my point is is that if we can get to BZA first and we're only a day or two away of the next planning commission meeting, then then, you know, it doesn't affect the schedule, but the whole intent was to try to not lose a month here.
When is the BZA?
The 20th.
Because it would normally be the 18th, but it's with their King Day. Will we go before or after?
It's the 11th, Mr. Chairman.
We're the 11th in January, so.
Oh, so it would be February. I think it's like February 8th then or something like that.
February 8th would be our, yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, that that would might make a lot of sense then to approve it contingent on obtaining the variance, and that way they don't, to Mr. Cox's point, they're not held back all the way till till February. That that seems unreasonable.
So I guess one question is if we don't get approved, can we assume that we're on the eighth meeting with a new design? Or would we lose that whole month and you said I'm saying, I guess, do I need to provide an alternate design just in case?
I think I think you would know in plenty of time to submit for the for the meeting on the 8th.
Okay.
On that 20th, you know, you'll know that night. Yeah, and you could work with Susan the next day or something to make sure you're on for the eighth.
Okay.
If you don't. And I guess, you know, it would probably have to be a contingent on obtaining all variances because any one of those is going to change occasion or the size or, you know, all that kind of stuff. So if we do do a contingent, it would have to be for all all variances.
Okay.
But I guess is there is there any staff comments? Other staff, Mr. Rodick, do you have anything?
No, I have no comments.
Who else do we have on here? I'm looking through. Anything else, Mr. Gelati, from you?
No, nothing further, Chairman.
Okay, Ms. Schultz?
Nothing, nothing from me.
Mayor, or anything?
Yeah, I think it's important to note that the city obviously took a big hand in this project with what we went through for the past, oh, I don't know, Gelati, about a decade to get that right in, right out.
Yeah, many, many years.
So, you know, in my two and a half years, we've talked about this a lot, but that sign has been it's like the last step to get this thing completed, and I can tell you from the city side, from a legal standpoint, we could have moved forward. We chose to go through you guys because I felt if we're going to have other people go through this process, we should as well. So that's why we're here today. But I just wanted to get it out in front of you so you could see it, and I guess we'll move to the BZA from here.
Okay. Commission members, any more?
Yeah, can I make a comment, please?
Yes, please.
I I agree with you in saying that the sign probably should be reduced inside for for good reason. However, I can understand the the reason for this height as proposed by the client, but I think that those two arguments should be presented to BZA in form in some form when they go there. I think it's important to note that we consider the height of that sign to be somewhat a little too, what can I say, grotesque for 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 lack of a better word. If they want to prove it as such with this height, it'll be up to them, but I think we should make our feelings known on this. And I I think we don't want to downplay that too much because it is, as you brought up, there is a high limitation on signs.
So I what I would like to do is then, since we're going to be going to that meeting, is I need to get a 3D perspective in and actually show, you know, what it's going to look like with the buildings behind it to get a true scale of what's going on with the size of this sign. And I think, you know, maybe if I submit that, maybe that should go back to the planning commission also, just to see, you know, those views that are going to be presented to the BZA. And, you know, I don't know if it changes anyone's look at it, but maybe if you see it and there's a recommendation, you can write it in recommendation. If not, then you can state exactly how you feel still. Does that make sense?
That does. I'm just trying to think of the the time time scale that goes with that. Mr. Schröder, you could you can disagree if you want, but I mean, we do have another meeting before the BZA meeting.
Good point.
That we could look at something like that. We wouldn't have to go into is up the discussion on. But we could, we could have that on the agenda. Potentially table it for now, reconsider once you have something to kind of show that scale to give us a better idea. Maybe even get, you know, get an accurate dimension on on the existing sign. I think it was like 20, you were guessing like 28 feet. And this one's like 18, so it is smaller than that. It does does sit up a little bit on a hill. I don't know if if the applicant, if that would be acceptable to you to, you know, we know we're going to be on teams again. We're going to be remote, I'm sure, in January. So at least we're not dragging you out killing an entire evening.
Oh, yeah, it's not a problem at all. And honestly, like, I don't know if you if I'm still sharing, but I mean, I we work in 3D, so, you know, this is something that we can really, I don't have all that stuff on there, but, you know, I can easily get some views with with the buildings behind it, and we'll see the scale. It's a lot when you look at it on paper and go, wow, 18 feet. And I think once you get on Route Eight at 50 miles an hour, it's really not going to be that big of a sign.
So.
But I do understand the concern.
So I'll just jump in for the record. Mr. Parker, you're kind of like speaking of some of the things that I was a little concerned about. I think that 3D thing with some of the building size around it would help me at least and probably help others. I came to this meeting thinking it's a really sharp looking sign. I had a general assumption idea of what you guys are trying to accomplish with the sign. And then I, you know, I also read Mr. Franz's comments about it being very large and all that, and they're needing a variant. So, you know, I appreciate that it's on a road where cars were traveling past this sign at a higher rate of speed. I I try to look at it not from the assumption of I live in the community. I know all of the merchants that are in there, but it's a way for the tenants to advertise their business. Maybe you can't see those letters when you're, you know, I I don't know, 1,000 feet away from the sign, but traveling at 50 miles an hour, I could start to recognize a Panera logo and a Huntington Bank logo and the Target circle and, you know, things like that. And it gives me an indication that's what's in there. You know, if it's possible, a Board of Zoning, I wouldn't mind seeing it similar in size. I understand the heights too, is to get it up so it can be. I understand the height too is to get it up so it can be seen farther away is my assumption. I'm not a sign expert, but just looking at it from the standpoint of, you know, the average Joe who lives in the community and look at the sign. But then Mr. Franz brings up the concerns about the size in relation to other stuff too. So that would be the reservation I'd have is just seeing something like that. And that 3D thing, diagram or drawing that you offered might solve that problem for me at least, so.
Sure.
What would you think about that?
I'm sorry, did you ask me? I'm fine with doing that. Like I said, we already have everything in 3D. So really, I just need to superimpose it on some images. I'll stop by, get the exact dimensions of the exact, existing. I have no problem coming back to the meeting. You know, I do understand the concerns and, like I said, it's not necessarily that I came out here and said, look at what I created. It was much more of a, here's the precedent and this is what we would like to do here. And so that was kind of like the request that I was fulfilling. So I have no problem, you know, examining it from the other perspectives that have been brought up.
How difficult is it for us to figure out how the original sign on 82 got approved? If, you know, I know, Brian, you said you looked really quick. You didn't see any variances for it, but is there a way? Is there a way we can research?
Can I ask one question? Is this owned by, is this going to be owned by Macedonia? Is this Macedonia sign?
I don't know.
Did I lose everyone?
No, I'm here.
No, sorry.
We heard you, but I don't think anyone knows that.
And I guess, because I guess that's what, that's the question that I think kind of affects everything about when we start talking about setbacks and stuff. Because in the cities that I've worked with in the past, they put their own, they'll put their own signs within the public right of way.
I guess that might be something good to try and, you know, probably with the mayor to discuss before we get back together on the 11th. That might affect that.
So I guess I've heard about the size and then do we also need to examine the location? Or is that?
I would, I would, I would look into it. You know, you could talk to the city staff. I guess they're, you know, they're, I think where you have proposed doesn't work well with the code. It would require a variance. I'm not sure how the BZA would view that or not. What, you know, is there reasons it's got to be there compared to being on someone's property? Probably ownership of it does matter. I'm not saying it's a bad spot. It's just, as it stands, it seems like it doesn't work with the code. So either a variance or maybe if the city owns it, I don't know if that, if that works or not. But I guess other, other commission members, are you guys, what do you guys, you guys okay with the thought of having him come back and with some kind of 3D model to get a better idea on the scale of the sign before he goes to BZA, Joe? I know you had the, use your comment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So again, what the intent here today was to get this in front of you guys, knowing full well we needed to go to the BZA. So we wanted to start the conversation at the planning commission prior to going there. The city does, has worked pretty hard on this. And remember that the property owners over there are paying for that right in, right out. I think there's some questions that need to be answered, but at the same time, we are in support of this project where it stands because there was a lot of talks about this for a great deal of time, including our law director, which in hindsight, I probably should have had him here this evening. But what we're looking for tonight is basically just put this in front of you for you to, for your perusal now, but knowing full well, we had to go to the BZA.
And we understand that, I guess, but, you know, the code is the code, you know, whether it's the city or not. We also, we don't want to approve something that goes against the code. If they need a variance, we want them to be aware of that. If the law director has an opinion, he thinks that being in the city's right of way is permissible with, you know, the city giving permission, then we'd be okay with that. I assume I'm speaking for everybody, but I mean, I would be okay with that as long as the law director has weighed in on that. Wouldn't have a problem with that.
I think there's a few opinions we should probably get from him that I'll, I'll make sure we work on and get those out to you guys so that we can make this a little bit clearer for everyone because I think there's a lot of confusion at this point.
Yeah, and I think the good thing with the schedule is we have another meeting before he has his BZA, so.
Right.
So we can get all that out and we can discuss it one more time. Hopefully have, you know, a good idea of what we're, what we're sending to them. And hopefully he can get the variances he needs. Just make sure he's getting the right ones. I hate to have him go there and not get everything that he needs and then find out later that, you know, he has to go again now we're into March or something like that. I don't want to do that.
Sorry.
All right, any more discussion or comments? Anybody have anything? Someone want to make a motion?
Go ahead, Kevin, why don't you make the motion?
Okay, I'd make a motion to table this to the January 11th meeting. I guess leave it as simple as, well, to, at that point, have more information to review.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Susan, do you mind giving, doing a roll?
Sure, no problem. Mr. Westbrooks?
Yes.
Mr. Xiaobao?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Velata?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you very much for your time.
January. And yeah, I'm sure you'll be working with the city and get this all straightened up for them. Thank you.
Good, everyone stay safe. Have a good one.
You too.
Thank you, Ed.
The next item is the Raising Cane's 597 East Aurora Road. For this item, I'm going to have to abstain from this because I've got a professional relationship with Raising Cane's, so I'm going to have to abstain. Mr. Schron, he was agreed to run this from this point on. So I, I'll probably listen in, but I'll let you guys discuss it. It's all yours, Mr. Schron.
We have representatives?
Yes.
We have representatives from the proposal here?
Yes.
Okay, will you kindly identify yourself, please?
Yes, Drew Gatliff with Oleo Development Group, 1062 Ridge Street, Columbus, Ohio, 43215.
Okay. And could you briefly explain what you're proposing?
Yes, I'm going to share my screen if that's okay.
Yes.
Okay. So we are proposing to redevelop the old Steak and Shake facility and convert that into a Raising Cane's. Initially, the thought was that we would raise the existing building and build up new. And after going through the preliminary exercise with Ms. Schultz, we, and coming to a conclusion of these are what the, you know, proposed elevations would look like, we were essentially tearing down the existing building to build one that was almost identical to it with the manserved roof and to meet the architectural code. And so we opted to keep the existing building as both a time and cost savings from a construction standpoint. And so we are proposing to renovate the existing and add a secondary drive-through window that would be, that would serve as a pay window and then utilizing the existing drive-through window as a pickup window. We are modifying the front entrance and then also adding a, an actual second side entry. Whereas today, there is a door that is an exit only rather than a, rather than, you know, two separate entrances because it was a Steak and Shake, the sit-down restaurant. We are also proposing to add on the back what we call a corral. What that does is it has, it houses our, we have a grease management system that is housed in that. We also house, it's a fully contained grease management piped system that comes and is emptied via a truck, a pump truck that comes and pumps that out. And then we also have our CO2 tank in the back there as well as staging of trash to take out to the dumpster. We would put, you know, some of the trash cans as they fill up, you know, to get two or three or four of them out there before we do an actual trash run during non-peak time. So we're not interfering with all the, we're not doing all of that while there's a bunch of people in the drive-through queue. We are proposing to relocate the dumpster enclosure. I know that comes up in the staff report. We're proposing that because of the way that the drive or the access drives are, are situated on the lot with a singular direction around the building. So we would be looking at, you know, a counterclockwise motion around the entire site except for the rear access drive that is a cross-access drive for the adjacent properties. One of the reasons to do that is in order to access the dumpster enclosure where it sits today, we would actually need to go the wrong way down a run, one-way access and then access the dumpster enclosure that way. So we're proposing it to be where we have it, where we're flowing in the right direction of traffic. Typically, that is, the trash is occurring in off-business hours, off-business hours for us. But since that is a shared access drive with the neighboring properties, it may not be off-business hours for them. And we do not want to impede their, their customers going down that road or that shared access drive. A tad, or the next page is the elevations that we submitted to you. And we did receive comments back. We revised those plans and sent them to our corporate entity to just to make sure that they were on board. As of, well, yesterday, they were not on board with the proposed change. But we have convinced them that otherwise it took most of today. So this was the, this was the sketch that we received in our comment packets or the comments for the front entrance and for an entry tower. And they had some pushback on that and we were glad to work with them and resolve those issues that they, or concerns that they did have. And ultimately came up with this tower, which makes it a little bit larger than what, a little bit wider than what, what we had initially sent over to them based off of your sketch. Pam, and the other thing that we were going to do because of that, those modifications, was eliminate that front covered patio area. While it is a nice feature to have with it being covered, it ultimately became a little pinched, given the existing architecture that's there. And then the desire to widen this entrance to give it enough room for a double, double-door entrance. I also am showing a floor plan. There was, there were a couple of other comments. And this, this floor plan is dated. It is before the revision that we just got back this afternoon because we literally just got it back this afternoon and I apologize for that. But it does show where we would have had the covered patio and then the vestibule. The vestibule has grown over this way that would encroach on that. And then we've removed the covered patio, but we would still have a patio area. It would just be uncovered with umbrella patio seating out, out front.
I think one comment I would have, I'd really, I'd really like to see the umbrella coverings and how that would look on the front elevation.
Yeah, okay.
One comment. I know, Brian, I have a question to ask about signage, double signage on the elevation, allowing extra signage on each elevation?
So that, I did a cursory review of the signage and typically we don't get into that until, you know, later date. But when it's offered up, we'll, we'll just kind of look at it at a preliminary level. So the code does limit each elevation to one sign per elevation. And I actually didn't realize that there's a number one on the front of the building. So there's, there's a lot of signs on the front of the building. And then there's multiple signs on the, on the east and west elevations as well. So that is something that just need to, to the applicant, you'll need to have a heightened awareness of as you go forward, what the sign code allows. And the planning commission historically is, is held true to that. That, that actually, that language about one sign per elevation has made it through multiple code revisions over the last 10 to 15 years. So those, those cases do require to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and you really have to prove why, from a practical difficulty standpoint, you need more than one sign on a building elevation.
Okay, and that's understandable. We do have our flexibility as most, as most corporate entities do. We have flexibility in our sign code. Obviously, what we're showing here is our, it's not quite the maximum, but it is a lot, right? And so where, you know, things that we, we can easily get rid of are the, the one with the picture of the dog, that banner, that's an easy one for us to just be able to eliminate. Having the signs all on the front tower, knowing i- if we're limited to only having the signs on the front tower, we would push to hopefully get something else just to give us, to give some architectural elements to, you know, from a signage standpoint to the other pieces of the building. But we do understand needing to meet the sign code and completely understand that. With the elimination of that front canopy, we are actually getting rid of the, where it said the one, or I'm sorry, it said.
One love.
Yeah, and so that actually would be eliminated as well. That was mounted at the, along the front edge of the canopy. But again, that canopy being removed. And, and as far as the umbrella, you know, we, we provide umbrella. We provide umbrellas for protection from our, for our customers, you know, if they don't want to be in the blazing sun, but they are not required. So if that does become a pinch point, we can not have the umbrellas. It's just from a preference standpoint for our customers. We obviously would like to provide some, some kind of protection from the sun for them.
I, I can't read the height. What is the height of the tower?
The new one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that, sorry, that is 25 feet at the ridge height. And then the 28 and a, well, 28 foot, five inches to the cupola.
It looked, from the front, it looks, the scale looks a little off. I can't put my finger on it. And one of the other comments was making all of the towers brick.
Okay. And we did increase the brick. Obviously, when we got rid of all of the signs, then that, that likely eliminates the reason of even why we would have any, well, we did raise the brick to, to match the rest of the building, but we did not make them entirely brick. We could, we can't, we can make them. We could, we can't, we can make them entirely.
I think they should be all brick.
Okay.
May I interject here for just a second? Mr. Gatliff?
Yes.
Did you get a copy of the December 7th memo from Pam Schultz?
We did, yes.
What she's bringing up now are things that you were unable to accommodate? Or is there another reason that maybe you did not do it at that time?
Well, the brick at the towers, we know, we originally had it where the brick stopped at the, basically a water table height. And then we raised it to match the rest of the building where there is existing. So instead of, here's what we had initially proposed, and so we raised our brick height to, you know, be over top or to align with the brick, with the clap siding above it. But we can, we can make that, we can make the brick go all the way to the top of those towers. That's not a problem. We did add some, so I don't want to say we didn't, we just ignored the comment. We just, it wasn't followed all the way to the top. I guess we didn't understand that to be the request.
Okay.
So I apologize for that. That's on, we apologize.
That's what you were looking for, Pam?
Yes. I just have, like, the question about the tower on the front elevation. What are your thoughts on the scale of how that tower looks with the existing roof? Does the mansard roof, like, I'm concerned about scale and the way that the proportions work, but does the mansard roof need to be raised?
Yeah, obviously, from our standpoint, and I don't want to use cost as a reason, but we're obviously, you know, trying to, with reusing most of the existing building, we're trying to limit the amount that we're modifying the existing elements that we are keeping, specifically the mansard roof. I think that what we could do right now, what we show are four-by-eight signs on the front, or on that front tower, and we could reduce that sign. We have your sketch, the front tower sketch, and it does show, you know, signs on all three sides, but from a, from a scale standpoint, it was difficult to get this one to fit without it being pinched up against that mansard roof there. But I think if we reduce the size of the signs to three-by-six signs, which is one of our more standard sizes, so we have four-by-eight and three-by-sixes, that that would allow us to lower that roof. Is that the concern, that the roof seems too tall?
That just the tower seems out of proportion.
I'm sorry. Yeah, the tower.
Yeah.
Okay. And I know we had initially kind of made the tower a little bit wider from our initial sketch that we had sent to our corporate counterpart. And so potentially, we have room to widen that a little bit more as well to give it, again, you know, just so it doesn't look so tall and skinny compared to the roof. And then, again, lower it, so by changing the roof or the sign size to a three-by-six would allow us to then lower that roof. Or lower the cupola.
Lower the tower.
Yeah, lower the entire, sorry, yes, I apologize.
Okay.
Saying roof, but I mean the tower.
Right.
Mr. Shioboni, can I ask a question before we move on to this tower? All right, Mr. Shioboni?
Yes.
Yeah. The way I read the initial submission by Ms. Schultz here, I thought the front entrance tower was to be 17 feet. Now I understand there's, it's going to go higher. And I believe Ms. Schultz, correct me if I'm wrong, you said, "Well, it should be compatible with people next door such as Discount Tire," as a 32-foot front tower. And so people can see signs from Route 82 on maybe on either side. But as I understand it, that won't happen anyway. You can't have three signs up on that roof. But I don't know why that tower should be higher, why Discount Tire should even figure in on this. The Pizza Hut, that abandoned building doesn't have a, wasn't compatible, neither was Steak and Shake compatible with the next door. I thought they wanted it for 17 feet high, which would probably be better looking than some giant tower in front of the building, don't you think?
Are you asking my, what I think?
I guess I am asking your question. Why, why put it out of proportion to the rest of the building, require them to do that when Steak and Shake wasn't that way and I don't know how they got in or Pizza Hut?
So my thought was, when I went in front of the building and drove up and down the road, the tree that is at Pizza Hut and the tower that is at Discount Tire hides the building when you're driving along. I did, I do feel, I guess my recommendation would be that the front elevation is where you can raise a tower, as long as it's in proportion to the building and doesn't look like it's just adding a tower to add a tower. I believe that it helps with the visibility of the building.
Well, Ms. Schultz, why do we care about that? Isn't that a business decision that we shouldn't be in there? If they like a big tower there, why do we care how their visibility is? Maybe it won't market as well, but I didn't know that was our business to make sure they have enough signage to, maybe they thought 17 feet was high enough.
I guess I am concerned about how things look in Macedonia and how they fit in utilizing the building code.
Shake and Steak and Pizza Hut apparently were grandfathered in. They could get away with this without either of those conditions you're putting on this one. Is that a right process?
I guess I don't understand your question.
Well, neither Steak or Shake or Pizza Hut ever had a high tower, but you're requiring it of this one. And I don't know how Steak and Shake and Pizza Hut were allowed to do what they did. How could they build their building without these towers, which you say are necessary, this tower?
I don't know that I'm necessarily saying it's a requirement. I'm trying to utilize the building that is existing with what is, what the neighbors have for visibility, you know? Just a recommendation.
That's the only question.
I would ask the client then, do you concur with that?
We aren't necessarily opposed to raising the tower and bringing that signage up closer to the road. You know, where we do have a little bit of qualm is if we lose the signage, if that's all of the signage that we're allowed is only on the front tower, then, you know, it obviously would be beneficial to be able to have signage elsewhere so that, you know, around the rear and the shared access drives that if we were able to have a sign that was over maybe our secondary entrance, it would be preferred. We do show that on our, and I don't disagree with the fact that the tower, I would like to look at, Pam, the idea of if we keep that tower a little bit lower, but maybe we bring, because we're eliminating the patio, the covered patio, if maybe we bring that front, I'll have to look at the building setback lines to make sure we're not encroaching on anything, but maybe bring that out a little bit further. And then that way, the tower sits a little bit out from the mansard roof as opposed to sitting almost in line with it, which then affects our ability to get those signs and what, how tall it has to be in order to get the signs. Would you agree with that?
You know, I'd have to, I'd have to see it.
Okay.
I'd have to see how far it pops out in the setback requirements.
Yeah, I think that that's kind of what is shown here. It's hard to, I know this is just a sketch and I know it, and obviously, we're trying to meet the design intent of it, but it's just hard with this mansard roof being, you know, the, it's just, we're trying to match what we're seeing there and then, you know, just trying to work through this. And again, I apologize, we, with our corporate entity, you know, getting their approval of even having the tower where they initially told us to push back and just say, "No, we don't want to do it." We pushed back on them to, you know, say, you know, to relook at it again and look at it from a, look at this from a, you know, we obviously want to work with the city on this. And if the city's desire is to have this tower element, obviously, it sounds like there is a concern with the height of the tower or the scale of the tower compared to the rest of the building. And so it sounds like we still have some work to do there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could just, so I think you do need, you do need work on the front of this and I'm not sure, based on that sketch, kind of how we got to this image I'm looking at now. But what I would do is take a look at the Walgreens just up the street from this site and you'll get a real good idea of what the gables look like on the front of Walgreens fronting 82. And that's really probably what you should strive to achieve. This definitely, the height of this sticks out and doesn't fit or proportionally fit the building. So now, I haven't gone through my comments, I do feel like, fast-forwarding to the end of my comments, that, you know, you should walk away this evening with some level of preliminary approval, but the architect just may have the included in that tonight or at least hope will be written, because you're going to need to work on that, that elevation eight fronting 82 for sure.
Yeah, and I agree with that. Yeah, obviously, from our standpoint, if we are able to get a good level of understanding that we're on the right track, I know, Brian, within your, or, yeah, I believe so, within some of your comments, it was, you know, wanting to add windows to the rear, this elevation, the northeast or the northern portion of the east elevation. And I did just want to bring up our floor plan with that. We do have a window here and then we have restrooms and then utility rooms back here. So that, from our standpoint, you know, if we do add windows, they're just going to be, they would end up being, you know, not, they would be faux windows, right? So they would not be windows. Yeah, spandrel glass, which we're not necessarily opposed to, but obviously, you know, would rather not add spandrel windows if we do not have to.
Well, and maybe, I just, I look at that east elevation, so your non-drive-through elevation and, you know, a good half of that elevation where there were windows, there aren't anymore. And I understand the inside of your building is going to be different than Steak and Shake. So when you have some banding toward the bottom, you know, maybe it's just doing something with the brickwork or adding some dimension. Certainly pulling the dog off there would be helpful, but maybe it's some sort of dimension or something to the elevation. And I'm no architect and I rely on Pam's expertise, but to me, it seems fairly simple on the front elevation. And I don't know that you can, that you can center the door in your gable, but it feels like if you just make that gable slightly taller and make it all brick, remove that number one thing, make that all brick, put your signage in the middle, and if you can, align your door more toward the middle, I think that would, it would do a lot to the front elevation. I will say in general, we should not be designing a building based on signage. So we should design the building and then we'll get the signage in there and you'll get a fair amount of signage. You get a lot of area. It's just you're limited to one sign per elevation. So you'll have a fair amount of marking on the building. So I don't feel like that's going to be an issue. You'll get a fair amount of area on all four sides of the building.
Again, Mr. Gatliff, you were receipt of Mr. Franz's memo dated December 6th also. Is that correct?
Yes, I was.
Based on what I've heard here, unless anybody has any more comments, I think we have an issue with the tower and one of the elevations. That's kind of putting it more generally, but I think that's what I'm hearing from the input from the reviews. Is that a real problem for your organization?
Well, no, not necessarily. I am trying to understand the, Mr. Franz, your comment about the windows that existed on Steak and Shake that we removed on the, on the east, I think you're referring to the east elevation?
Yeah.
We actually did not remove any windows other than where we added that side vestibule. There are no windows that exist further back from where that existing. Just looking at this elevation here, the darkened is the new wall. So this is where their old door existed next to their restroom vestibule. And then there was a window here and a window, like, this kind of was a band of windows and we've added a side vestibule there, but we didn't remove any windows from this area backwards because that was also their restrooms and utility rooms.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the Google Earth image. And so it's, there's currently a double, a double set of windows to the north of the, I guess it's one of their utility doors. I don't know if that was a full-access door in and out to the restaurant, just to the north of the canopy that's on the side of the building. So that's the window that I was talking about. Are you saying that that window remains on this elevation that you were showing?
Yeah, and I'm going to that. So you're saying this window here?
I don't see your screen right now. Yeah, that window, yeah. Is that, are you saying that window exists?
Yes, it does. It does. It still remains.
It still remains.
Yeah. And let me pull up, just, I apologize, I'm sharing. Just to give some context of it, that's this door or that's this darkened brick right here. And what that door, it wasn't a utility door. It was actually just their, they only had one entrance into their, into the space. Obviously, from a code standpoint, you have to have two, but they had one entrance in. And it makes sense, right? So when you go to an Olive Garden or you go to anything that's a sit-down restaurant, you only have one entrance in. And then you have your two exits, you have other exits that you're able to come out, but obviously, they want to make you go through the, go through the hostess in order to be seated. And so that's what, that door was like an emergency egress, but what we've done is add this gable. And where, there was a gable that was here, you know, more over that door, that has been removed because we're adding... that has been removed because we're adding this entrance. Um, and again, from a site or a floor plan standpoint, why we're adding it where we are and not pushing it any further back is just because that gets into our restroom vestibule area. So obviously we want to keep it a little further, a little further, um, to the, to the north or I'm sorry, to the south a little bit.
That makes sense. I wasn't privy to the floor plan, so.
No, and I understand that. And I, once, once I got your comments, I, I was like, well, that makes sense because you're not seeing, you're not seeing the floor plan and I apologize for that. That's, that's.
Yeah, and we don't, we don't want, we don't want windows looking into bathrooms. I get that.
No, no, exactly.
Yeah, and I'm not an enormous fan of spandrel glass, um, either, so.
Yeah, and, and we are, I know there is some spandrel glass on the opposite side of the current Saginake. That's obviously over on this, um, facade. And that's where they had more or less their cook line and things like that. And we're replacing those with all, um, glass. We do have some spandrel glass here because of an element interior, um, that we are, uh, proposing there.
So that's not vision glass up on that east elevation?
The, this here?
Yeah, that's not, huh?
We were, we're going to replace that with, um, spandrel. Uh, potentially we could get, we could go back to vision glass. Um, there is glass, uh, I know it, it doesn't view because we're not looking at 3D, but there is glass, you know, uh, on the adjacent corner right here.
Yeah.
So this is the front corner.
To be, to keep it as vision glass.
Okay.
I would agree.
Okay. Yep. Yeah, we can do that.
And, and I would, can you just tell me what, why are you moving away from the bars, the Western Reserve look of the mutton bars?
Um, they exist on this building and don't exist on, um, on other buildings in the area. So we, we had removed them. Uh, we can add them back if they are needed.
Yeah, there's, there's lots of buildings in the area that have the bars.
Okay. And, and I don't disagree. There, there are a lot of buildings that have the bars and there are a lot of buildings that don't have the muttons. So we were choosing not to do the muttons if, if, if we had a choice.
Yeah, and that, and that's something, you know, that the commission certainly should, should weigh in on that. I think they definitely add an, an element of that Western Reserve. They look nice, but that's, you know, the administration, the commission can give you their take on that. Um, and can I just go back? I, again, I don't want to, I, I do think, by the way, you've done a nice job with your plan and trying to work through things and, um, and I know the city is, um, excited about getting another restaurant option. So this, and Cane's, by the way, I will, uh, I will confess, I'm a, I'm a Cane's sauce fanatic, so I'm ready to get the fruit.
Yes, understood.
But we need to work through some of these things. Um, so, but, but I, I think that, uh, you know, the more traditional Western Reserve architecture you can do, like that one in the front, this does not work.
Okay.
Um, so however you work out with, um, Ms. Schultz and, and, and the mayor on ultimately what that, uh, that power looks like, or maybe it's reduced and it's more of a gable, kind of like the Walgreens, whatever it works out. I, I think removing that one and making that whole thing brick would make a tremendous difference on that front elevation.
So, so you're saying removing the, the collapse siding area of the, of the front elevation?
I, I think it should all be brick in the, in that gable, whatever ultimately shakes out with the tower, gable, whatever you want to call it. I, I think it should be a brick gable.
Okay.
And I like the, I mean, I do like the, the fiber cement Andy you have at the top. Um, I agree with Ms. Schultz. The gables should all be, should be brick around. Um, so those are things I think, you know, my recommendation to the commission tonight is to give you, um, a preliminary plan approval for object two. And there'll be lots of stipulations, but you can work with administration on the architecture to come back for a final look at the commission. Um, you know, certainly we got to hear from the commission tonight. It's been all the, and so, but those are things that I think you can come back, um, if the commission agrees, uh, relations. Mr. Chairman, if I could, I could just briefly walk through my, my other comments because I do have a couple of questions about the access and the drive aisles.
Yes.
Yes, yes, please. I was just about to ask you.
Okay, thanks. Um, and, uh, and, um, Mr. Gatlin, if you could bring up your view of the, the site that you showed originally?
This, this one or the one that's zoomed out?
Uh, one that's more, um, zoomed in. Yeah, that, that's good. Yep. And so one of the things in my, so we know you have, you have too few parking spaces, which by the way, I, I think is great. The less parking, the better. You're more of a drive-through business is my gut feeling.
Yeah, correct. And, and I was going to address that.
Yeah, so, but, but nevertheless, the code is what it is and does require more. So you'll have to, you'll have to tackle that issue. Um, you know, I, my suspicion is the administration would, uh, would not have an issue with less parking as well. Um, more greenery, the better. And so as I get into that comment, that drive aisle, I think you have it at 19 feet, that one-way drive aisle?
Yes.
Can you zoom in a bit on that?
Yep. You're talking this one right here.
Yeah, yeah. So that, that really needs to shrink. I mean, that's almost a road. You could do 20 feet two-way traffic on a road. Um, so what, why is that? So why?
Yeah, so, uh, to answer why we did that, uh, we, we, we follow the, the code from a, um, from the access aisle when it's adjacent to a parking, um, field. And, and so, you know, 19 feet was, is the requirement for that. And so that's just where we got it. Um, I, I'm not opposed to shrinking that. I am probably opposed to shrinking to 12 feet only because, uh, that makes it extremely tight for delivery traffic, uh, or any kind of larger trucks. But I would, I would be, you know, I think 15 feet or somewhere in that range would be, you know, a, a good, I, I feel a good compromise.
Yeah, I, I think that anything less than 19 is going to be better. And you're referring to 117111, which states that the access aisle is 19 feet?
Yes. Windows parking, yes.
Yeah.
And so, and, and I'm not saying that, that, I'm, I'm just saying that's where we got the 19 feet number. I'm not saying that, you know, we're not saying, hey, we need it to be this. That's just why we, why we kept that.
Yeah, no, I understand. And, and I think that, um, at the end of the day, you're going to need to go get a variance for the, uh, the reduced parking spaces, which again, you know, I think makes all the sense in the world. At the same time, I think you should reduce that, that access aisle and ask for a variance. And then you could green that area up. And I think I, I got to that in my report.
Yes.
And, um, you could sort of green that area up adjacent to that discount tire and make a, a wider landscape aisle in which I just think will make a, a world of difference on, on the site.
Yeah, no, I, I, we agree 100% with that.
Okay. Um, and then we've already kind of gone through all the, um, architecture issues. I had just some, just some comments on, on landscaping. I think we could beef up the landscaping particularly as it fronts out at 82. And then I know it probably seems maybe a little silly, but if you just scroll back so you go a little further north on the site where you have your dumpster enclosure.
Having some back here.
Yeah, just behind that enclosure, just, it would be nice to, to just see some greenery there. I know there's, you know, that existing fence back there, but just a couple, um, you know, what, let's say coniferous type trees back there. Cause the code does require under 1172026, it requires a, an appropriate mix or proportion of deciduous and coniferous species. So that'd be a way to, you know, certainly add a couple there would be helpful.
Okay, not a problem. Um, obviously from, from our standpoint, we, uh, we tend to shy away. And I know that you're not, you guys aren't going to want to love to hear this. We do shy away from the, from putting the trees, um, lining the street with trees if we can help it, only because obviously we're, um, we still want to have visibility to our building. Um, but we're not opposed to it. It's just, we, we want to be very selective of the trees so that they don't end up like the tree that's sitting in front of, um, uh, in, in front of, uh, Pizza Hut that is, you know, a low, low hanging, large canopy that obstructs the view not only of us, but of their, of their own building, right?
Yeah.
So we want to avoid that if we can help it. Um, but we're not opposed to trees in general. We're just, we want, we want to be a little selective on our, on our, uh, on the tree species.
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's fine. And we can look at that going into the next stage of the plan. Um, I agree. You don't want to put something, you're going to spend all that money on the building. You don't want to, you know, necessarily hide it completely. But, um, there's ways to achieve, um, you know, the goals of what the, the community is trying to do with some street trees or street landscaping and, and, uh, and certainly your client's goal. So we can look at that going forward.
Okay.
And then, uh, you will need, whatever you're going to do with, I'm assuming you're going to do some more site lighting or new site lighting. Just need to provide a photometric plan.
And we, and we have that.
Yeah, that's fine. And then, um, I went through this exhaustive process about the use, just to conclude that your drive-through, um, is fine as proposed. And I do that more just for the benefit of it's documented for the record. So if anybody ever looks at this and says, well, wait a minute, the, the B1 district wasn't allowed, you know, code drive-in uses, um, this is just really to get it out there to kind of state why, um, it's allowable in this instance.
Okay.
And then, uh, I would say, um, just one last, I do want just one more thing. Can you scroll this a little bit further back on the property to the north?
Yes.
And then, yep, and then scroll, just zoom in just a tad. I'm really curious. So that's a one-way, that's a one-way coming in, right?
Sorry, where, um?
So it shows one way right to the south by the barrier-free parking space? No, to the, to the east side of the.
This is one way.
Yep, it's one way. Why is the arrow pointing toward the 1A right there?
Why, why does this arrow come this way?
So somebody can actually hop into the drive-through lane from there?
Correct. So because this is a shared access that gives access and, um, from Summer Road, um, we want to have the ability that if someone could come in this, um, instead of having to, if they came in, they wouldn't have to loop all the way around the building and then come back up.
I didn't look at your landing. Oh, go ahead.
Uh, uh, especially because, um, with this being a signaled intersection, there's a, you know, there's a chance that this backs up. And so if someone's sitting here, then they block and then they block and then they block. And then we can't, we can't funnel people out if we can't get, until light changes. And so all of a sudden it starts to lock up our drive-through. Um, and then that access coming in is right here as well. So, um, trying to avoid intersection here of this person doing this and this person coming in off the road. So as, we know we can't avoid it altogether, but i- if we can avoid some of it, it's beneficial, so.
Yeah, and so a couple of quick observations. I would say you're going to want to probably have some onsite directional signage out.
Yes.
Locals, but just the direct traffic.
Yeah.
Um, coming through that cross-access. Cause I, I could see, I didn't look at the landscaping in that island, but I, I could see a potential, you know, issue there.
Yeah, and, and just so, uh, everybody, planning commissioner and everybody is aware, um, and, and, and staff as well, we do, uh, during grand opening, we understand that it's a very, um, it, it's usually pretty busy, especially in a new market. Um, uh, you know, in a, having our only location, um, or our closest location probably Kent, otherwise it's the more west side. Uh, and so we do realize that there's going to be, we anticipate it being relatively busy. And we do have onsite police officers, uh, off, off-duty police officers that help direct traffic, um, until we are out of what we call our honeymoon phase. Um, and then at that point is when traffic patterns have kind of established themselves versus, um, you know, us just hoping for the best and letting people make their own decisions. We, we definitely have, uh, not just employees out there. It is, uh, off-duty police officers.
Yeah, and I'm just looking at that landscaping. So there's no issue. Those are all, there's junipers and spirias. There's, it's low ground cover.
Low growth, yes.
Yeah. So, and then, um, I'm assuming that you chose the 24-foot wide drive aisle between the parking and the back for, just to sort of line up with what's there existing?
That, uh, you're talking, um, this area right here?
Yeah, you have to go back to your parking. Yeah, so you have 24.
Yeah, um, so we, we prefer, um, we, we prefer 24. Um, we, you, you know, I know we can get away with 20. Um, my experience is that not everybody pulls into the parking lot 100% of the way. Um, and so if you have, or you have a big truck that, uh, has their tailgate, or not tailgate, but their hitch that overhangs into the drive aisle. Um, 24 is about the minimum that we prefer to go just because we don't want to have anybody who, you know, sideswipes another car or something like that. Um, a- anytime we have two-way parking, especially with, with, uh, or I'm sorry, two-way traffic, especially with, uh, parking on either side, we, we prefer the 24 versus anything narrower.
Yeah.
And it does align with the adjacent, yes.
Yeah, and the code, the code allows you to go to 22. And I just assumed you were more or less trying to line up, so.
Yeah.
Right, I appreciate it. Um, so, uh, Mr. Chairman, that's all the comments or questions. I know it's a little different than our normal, um, how we kind of normally go through and have me read, read my report, but, um, I think they've done a good job. The only issue was I didn't cover what, uh, there are three existing non-conforming parcels. Um, it would be a preference, I think, to combine all those into one conforming lot.
Okay.
I don't know if you had talked through that at all with the ownership, but, um, that'd be something that it would be a preference.
Okay, um, we can definitely, uh, work through that with the, with the ownership group. Um, as you mentioned, it, it isn't, uh, it is somebody else who owns the property. So it's not us that, um, we're, we're doing a ground lease. Um, but we can definitely work through that with them. Uh, I don't think that they would have an issue with it. I wouldn't imagine. Obviously they're not going to want to incur the costs, but if we can, if we say we, we would incur the costs on that, then they should be open to it.
Sure, it's not a, a major issue. It'd just be nice to clean up that non-conformity that we, that we're making up the site.
Yeah, I understand. And, and, and we're not opposed to doing that.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Don Bell, Metro City Fire.
Yes. Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, just to bring the applicant up to speed there on a couple of items that, uh, there is a Knox box on the front of that building, so, uh, we can assist in opening that so that if they need to move that or want to move that, then they, they will not have to buy another one.
Okay.
I would prefer that not to be destroyed just because of the security of their lock. And, uh, also it looks like you're pretty much renovating the inside, so I'm hoping you're going to submit some building plans in for the inside for review. And the kitchen appliances for suppression, that will have to be a separate committal for acceptance testing and smoke testing for the exhaust vent. Uh, and I have not seen, uh, that latest revision where you plan on putting, uh, a patio on the front. Uh, uniformly throughout the city, all outdoor seating has crash protection that's spelled out in the Ohio Fire Coast 2017 edition, section 312. So I don't know if that's going to impact the architectural for the front side of that street. Uh, but, uh, your neighbor, the class there, First Lot, uh, Starbucks, all of their outdoor seating utilizes that. Winking Lizard utilizes a crash protection and theirs is unique because they converted that into a, a ornamental, uh, flowers and vegetation there. But that, that wall was designed to withstand a vehicle impact. Uh, Wendy's to your east, uh, Uh, Wendy's to your east, uh, the Blue Willow there by the freeway, all of the outdoor seating all utilize crash protection. And I'm sure you Rex know that that building is non-wrinkled. So I don't know how that's going to impact your design, just to make sure of that.
Yes, um, uh, so to answer a few of your questions, we have submitted for the interior demolition, um, application, uh, that is in, uh, for review. Um, again, only interior only, and that is, uh, that is so that we can identify any hiccups or anything that maybe was a hidden condition for us. Um, so I believe that those, those should have been, or I know that they have been submitted. So I made the submission. Um, I don't know if they have been approved yet. Um, I know that I got a call earlier that basically they were waiting on our demolition contractor to, um, to register in order to release that permit, I believe. Um, as far as the fire suppression, um, we are going to be running a fire suppression line, uh, to this building and then, and then, um, we will be running a fire suppression line to this building, um, a new fire suppression line, and then sprinkling the entire building, um, because we will have more, more occupants than, uh, than what is, um, we'll have more than 99 occupants. Yep, uh, and then what was, I, I, I apologize, I wrote down Ohio Fire Code. What was the actual section of that for that crash protection, just so we can have a, we can make sure we designed towards it?
Section 312.
Okay, thank you.
I can't quote you the page, but it's.
No, 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 that's fine. Section 312, that's fine. We will make sure that we, uh, comply with that.
And then that sprinkler system will be a separate submittal and we'll have to do the underground, the ball, uh, testing and acceptance testing. So with all that being said, then I assuming you'll have to monitor the water flow on that. So you'll have some, some type of, uh, fire alarm system in there to monitor that?
Yes, we will.
And also there's rooftop units, there's duct detectors on those. Then I would assume you will tie those to your alarm panel also?
Yes.
Okay. Just to give you a heads up, just to make things go a little smoother.
Yeah, nope.
Minimize any hiccups in the road.
Yes, understood. And, and, and very much appreciated.
Yeah, I don't know if you got my, my original submittal, but it did not include, I didn't realize you were going to do the sprinkler system and the patio up front.
Yes, yep, understood. We, yep.
If you need my contact information or anything, or my, uh, yes, phone, then, uh, I can give it to you or Susan can give it to you.
Okay, that sounds great, yeah. As we get, uh, further along, we can, we can get that information.
Okay, and it looks like you got two or three roll-off dumpsters, it's pretty full there already, so. I think there's busy bees in there.
Yeah, yeah, there was a lot of equipment in there, um, that, uh, needed to come out.
Yes.
Cooking equipment and stuff like that.
Yes, and just for clarification for the commission, one door that's on the east side there that was questioned, yes, that was the emergency exit out of the building for their two ways out. And those other two doors go into utility closets that are not accessible inside the building, or they weren't.
They still aren't.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Drew, this is Bob Rodick, how you doing?
I'm doing well.
Hey, um, I stopped by the site today and, uh, uh, recognized that it's not as critical as what, what everybody else is talking about. The portal that was sitting right out front of the building. And I talked to the contractor, I asked them move it to the, to the rear. Uh, visually it's just not attractive on, on State Route 82 to have a, a crapper like that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I 100% agree, and I apologize for that being.
I'm sorry.
I apologize for that being located where it was. That doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, if you just, uh, insure, I guess I, I talked to him and he said he's going to go ahead and get on it right away. But if you could just follow up with him, that'd be great.
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks, Drew. And I'll be in touch with you. I expect the, uh, the plan review to be back, uh, fairly shortly here.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Comments?
Yeah, Chairman Joe Gilati here.
Yes, sir.
I have assumed, I assume the applicant, uh, has my memo, uh, here, uh, dated November 25th. Uh, quickly, I, I think they've done the right thing. They've kept the existing traffic pattern, uh, generally a one-way routing in a, uh, counter-clockwise, uh, direction around the building, uh, that lines up with, uh, the way that Steak and Shake manage the traffic. Quite honestly, it's really the only way to manage the traffic on this particular, uh, unique site here. Uh, their Easterly driveway on 82 has gone, has been converted to a right-in only. I think that's the proper thing to do. Uh, so let's make sure we carry that, uh, change through to the final plans. Uh, so that's a good thing. Uh, the only observation, I guess, for the planning commission is that, uh, we should be careful not to stack up too much traffic in the drive-through, uh, because if it does stack up too far, it'll block the, um, Easterly aisle on the site, uh, and, and could put the site on to lockdown. Uh, the drive-through maneuver is a little different. Steak and Shake, uh, actually the cars would wrap all the way around the building in a counterclockwise direction, so they could stack in that Easterly aisle. Uh, but we don't appear to have that, uh, ability here. So I would just be, I would just want the, the commission and the applicant to be careful not to stack too many cars in the drive-through and block the Easterly aisle.
Understood.
Any other comments? Anyone like to make a motion? I would like to try, Mr. France, I would appreciate your, uh, guidance on this. But what I will say here is this, I think we can give, uh, preliminary approval on this with the following major items, being the tower, architecturally the tower, and the windows along the, uh, drive-through side, I think it is. Um, with a few other minor issues as stated by, uh, our architectural, um, reviewer. Furthermore, I think you need a, uh, a variance from VZA for the reduced parking. Um, the sign, you need a separate sign permit application. Uh, we need updated plans with the landscaping, lighting, and other performance standards as stated by the fire official. Uh, all of these items, I think, are probably incorporated in the review memos from the department. Um, I think for right now, uh, I think we're kind of limited to this preliminary plan approval. Mr. France, may I have your comment, please?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I just encourage you to get a second to that motion and I can provide some comments.
Yes, I, I would second that motion.
Okay. Um, Mr. Chairman, I, I think that was a, that was a solid motion. I believe I heard you, um, also, uh, referenced the 19-foot drive aisle to which the applicant stated they are willing to reduce and thereby make a, a larger, um, green buffer between themselves and the discount fire mart. Uh, they'll of course need a variance for that, but they seem willing to add that on, um, as they will have to go get a variance for the reduced parking. Um, also, uh, one of the architectural comments that was pretty significant was, and I think I heard the applicant, um, stated they were amenable to it, is to, um, brick the gables. So rather than having the fiber cement board, they'd be brick gables. Um, and then the one suggestion I had, uh, which was to, um, consider elimination of the three non-conforming lots. So, uh, that would take a new legal description and, uh, and lot combination, which can be done at a future planning level, uh, perhaps with final site plan approval, to combine those three non-conforming lots. Um, if the, if the commission is okay with those, is the only things I, I think would be additional suggestions.
Could, could I also add one comment?
Yes.
Um, could, we also get drawings for the new patio, um, basically the whole new front elevation drawings? Um, this is the first that I've seen any of those.
Yes, yes, we can. Um, can, uh, can I ask on the lot consolidation? Um, can, we're willing to do that? Can we make that so that it doesn't hold up our final approval if we're in the works on it? Knowing that it, knowing that it's somewhat out of our control because of, uh, because of our, we don't own the property?
I, I think that's a good, I, I think that's a good idea, Mr. France, because if, if they ever have a ground lease, I don't know how, uh, we could put that as one of our requirements. They might, they could work on that with the, uh, people that own the property, but I, I, I think maybe we ought to withdraw that as, as part of our preliminary approval.
And again, and this can go on the record, we will, we will push the, the, um, our landlord to allow us to do that, and we will incur the costs on that. We have no problem doing that. But I, I just don't want it to hold up our, our approval process, uh, if, knowing that that sometimes isn't the easiest or isn't the quickest, um, process.
Yeah, so let me just say that, uh, it, it definitely would not hold up your, um, approval process. It is a very fast process with the planning commission. It's literally, you know, you, um, draft up a new, uh, legal description, draft up a, uh, combination plat and submit it with your final plan approval. They can take action on it, um, at the same time that night. If you can't get your, get the, um, the property owner to agree to it, then, then I suppose, you know, so be it. But if it's part of the commission's motion, it just gives a little more credence. So I'm okay with whatever the commission ultimately wants to do. I just think it gives you a little more credence to, um, getting that non-conformity eliminated.
Okay.
And nobody, I promise you, no one's going to want to hold up getting canes in Macedonia over a non-conformity, but it would be nice to eliminate it.
Right.
I agree, I agree. I think it's worth mentioning, whether or not it's under our jurisdiction is, this is, is true. But I think it's worth mentioning since it is an issue. Any other comments? Okay. Uh, okay, I will make a motion to approve the drawings, uh, preliminary, uh, with respect to the comments we made and with reference to the memorandums produced by the building department, or the, uh, yes, building department.
Mr. Chair, you, you have a motion already on the floor and a second by Mr. Cox. So if you, if you just simply want to acknowledge those additional items as discussed in the record, I, I think that's acceptable, and then you could take your vote, provided Mr. Cox is okay with that.
Yes, that's all right with me, I guess. Yeah, I would, I, if you make that motion, Joe, I would second that.
Okay, and I stand corrected.
You're moving to add.
We have a roll call, please.
Yeah.
Sure. Mr. Westbrook's? Oh, I'm sorry, abstained, right? Are you still there?
I'm still here, abstained.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Mr. Shiavon?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Velada?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, uh, Drew, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So what is your anticipated time to have canes opened?
I was going to ask the same thing.
Well, uh, yeah, so, uh, that's going to depend on when, you know, how we can move forward. And, and Bob's been fantastic, uh, in Nino's absence, um, on working with us to, to obviously get the preliminary, um, or the interior demolition done. Um, anything that we can do to continue to move forward, we would, we would greatly appreciate. Obviously, we understand we're doing it all at our own risk, um, of, uh, you know, we have to comply with the building, uh, planning commission. Um, so, uh, with that being said, I, we are currently slated for a May opening, um, uh, assuming that we're able to continue to move forward.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Do we have any other issues on the floor right now?
No.
No? Okay. Uh, right here, motion to adjourn?
Uh, so move.
Second? To the paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Yes, Merry Christmas to you.
Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year.
Thank you so much.
Hopefully we make 2021 COVID-free, huh?
That would be nice.
All right, take care.